Good afternoon, the Committee on Hafadeh, the public hearing on Bill sixteen dash thirty seven is now called to order by myself as a sponsor pursuant to section six point zero one A one I of our standing rules. Today is Monday, October second, and the time now is two o'clock P M. In compliance with the open government law, the notice for this public hearing were posted on the Gov Guam Public Notice K G T F B B S Channel twelve and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, September twenty fifth, change one on September twenty seven, and on Thursday, September twenty eight. The Bill sixteen dash thirty seven C O R sponsored by myself and co-sponsored by Senator Roy Canahtan and act to add a new section seven five one two two C two A to chapter seventy five of Title twenty one Guam Code annotated relative to requiring the Tomorrowland Trust to solicit competitive bids for the mass grading and mineral extraction of a portion of lot five four one two. Physical note for Bill sixteen dash thirty seven was requested on January twenty six, twenty twenty three, it was received and disseminated via email on February fourth, twenty twenty three. Those participating on the Bill sixteen dash seventy seven C O R invited to the panel, we have Mister Jerry Johnson and Mister Joseph Cruz. Jerry Johnson from Hawaiian Rock and Jerry Cruz from, Joseph Cruz from Tomorrowland Trust. We also have Tom Dexter, uh, but he's not providing any testimony. He needs from Tomorrowland Trust Commission. The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Please provide my legislative staff with any document for photocopy and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for question or additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum shall, will be restricted from participating and will be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. The co-sponsor of the bill, Senator Roy Canahtan and Senator, my vice chair, Senator Telo Tidaway. I will give now my opening statement for the bill. Good afternoon colleagues and to the people of Guam. Bill sixteen dash thirty seven is being heard by myself as main sponsor and is co-sponsored by Senator Roy Canahtan. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to section six point zero one A one I of our standing rules where the sponsor bill may conduct a public hearing on the bill should the Committee of Jurisdiction fail to conduct a hearing within hundred and twenty calendar days. Bill sixteen is my second introduction to this measure. The first time in the thirty six Guam Legislature. The Tomorrowland Trust Commission is authorized to, among other things, lease or license for commercial use certain properties in his land inventory. Further, commercial leases or license may occur only on Tomorrowland Trust designated lands not to exceed nine percent of the total remaining unassigned Tomorrowland Trust land area inventory and may include mineral extraction when specifically approved by the Tomorrowland Trust and the legislature and must be awarded through a competitive bid process to entities determined to be responsible and responsive. It is, it is no secret that Tomorrowland Trust currently has a backlog of applicants for homestead lots as well as multimillion dollar shortfall to survey new homestead lots and improve them with access and utilities. This bill intends to allow a large portion of lot five four one two, an area between Gloria B, Nelson Public Service Building and the coastline which is presently inaccessible and undevable that contains quality limestone aggregate for construction purposes and authorized as Tomorrowland Trust to go out for bid on this area for quarry, quarrying. Inasmuch as Guam's construction industry now requires approximately one point five cubic yards of limestone aggregate per year and the current market rate for quality limestone is approximately two dollars per cubic yard, maybe more today. Extraction operation of this lot may potentially yield up to one, minimum one million dollars per year for Tomorrowland Trust during the next six years. We know that the prudent extraction operation of lot five four one two can result in the land form that can accommodate hundreds of new homestead lots as well as a large pad for another public service building if approved by the Tomorrowland Trust. Ultimately, Bill sixteen will cause the Tomorrowland Trust Commission to issue an invitation for bid for the development, development of Tomorrowland Trust Lot five four one two, with an extraction plan to assist Tomorrowland Trust accomplish three objectives. First, generate approximately six million dollars in revenue through the sale of limestone aggregate. Second, create a sustainable revenue source by leasing a pad for a new public service building. And third, creating new homestead lots. I look forward to hearing testimony and will work closely with the Committee of Jurisdiction as we submit the transcript of this proceeding for them to get this report out of the committee as soon as possible. To do this, I'd like to also introduce Senator Dwayne Snickers has joined us this afternoon. We'll begin with testimony from Tomorrowland Trust before I go to Hawaiian Rock. All right, Mister Cruz, acting director.
Good afternoon, Chairman of Committee on General Appropriations, General Government Appropriations and Appropriations, Senator Joe Sin Augustine. And good afternoon, Senator Tidaway, Senator Snickers, and Senator Canahtan. My name is Joseph Cruz. I am the program coordinator for with the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. I am currently acting as the administrative director in the absence of Ms. Alice Tyrone, who is on leave attending to a family medical situation. On behalf of the administrative director, Alice Tyrone and I, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide oral testimony on Bill sixteen dash thirty seven. Bill sixteen dash thirty seven provides a positive revenue generating source and an avenue to develop an unusable parcel. However, after a review of Bill sixteen dash thirty seven, the Tomorrowland Trust Commission has some concerns. More importantly, since the O P A has released the analysis on C L T C oversight of the removal of coral material from the Guam International Raceway Park. First, we want to ensure that the approximate six million dollars in potential revenues as stated in Bill sixteen dash thirty seven does not create a cap on the total income that C L T C could potentially earn from extracting minerals from lot fifty four twelve. Second, the successful bidder should be required to obtain a performance and payment bond for the project. Doing so would ensure that C L T C is assured that the project will be completed in line with the scope of work and plans. Furthermore, C L T C will not be liable for non-payment to subcontractors. Third, the statement that reads that single fixed price per cubic yard of aggregate shall cover all associated expenses by the awardee including those described in one above. C L T C disagrees that C L T C, C L T C should be liable for the expenses incurred by the awardee. Fourth, the successful bidder should be required to conduct a topographical survey at the commencement, midway, and after the project. This requirement will provide C L T C with sufficient data to ensure adequate information to determine how much material is available, how much was extracted, and how much revenue is due to C L T C. Also, it would prevent a repeat of what had occurred at the Guam International Raceway Park. Lastly, C L T C would like the section that reads, and to the Tomorrow Home Loan Fund thereafter removed. Revenues from this bill, if passed into law, should be solely for the purposes set forth under the creation of the Tomorrowland Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. Thank you.
That's it? That's all you guys ask? Make sure we get a copy of your testimony so we can incorporate in the committee report. Sir, from Hawaiian Rock.
Jerry Johnson, I'm the president of Hawaiian Rock, have been for the last forty years. I've been here a while. Hafadeh Chairman, Senator Augustine, Senators, staff of the Guam Legislature, Commissioner or Acting Director of the Tomorrowland Trust, members of the public and thousands of families on the waiting list for homesteads from the Tomorrowland Trust. We view the purpose of this bill as threefold. First, the Tomorrowland Trust stands to earn about three and a half million to five million, six million. It all depends on a grading plan chosen in royalties for the aggregate that could be removed from the portion of lot fifty four twelve because of pre-engineered grading, grading of the property. Second, the C L T C property will be transformed from a hilly jungle into either developable forty to eighty homestead lots or dependable site, a developable site for the new Gov Guam headquarters like the existing G P A G W facility was done depending on the land use plan selected by C L T C. In two thousand fifteen, as a preference to P L thirty three ninety five, the backlog of applications for homestead and agricultural lands was approximately eight thousand applicants and is certain that that backlog has increased during these eight years. Third, the construction industry will have another source of aggregate to meet its requirement of one and a half million to two million cubic yards of aggregate per year which are required for private Gov Guam and U S federal projects. Allow me to briefly expand on these three points. The C L T C faces enormous challenges to meet its mission in providing improved homestead lots and compensating those who land cannot be returned. We have learned that the commercial leases and Gov Guam allotments alone will never close the gap between revenues needed and revenues realized. The value of aggregate on lot fifty four twelve will produce between a different number, but four point six and eight million, again depending on the grading plan for C L T C to help close that revenue gap depending on the development scheme selected. Secondly, the portion of lot fifty four twelve at focus here is about sixty acres of hilly jungle currently serving no purpose as real estate asset to C L T C. Through engineered mass grading plans, it can be transformed in either a forty or eighty homestead lot or into developable pads for new Gov Guam structures to accommodate revenue and taxation, lands managed, G P A as examples. The leaseback of these pads will provide additional long-term revenue. You know, I might add that this, in addition, this property in the past was a quarry before Hawaiian Rock was even here, so that would have been sixty five to seventy years ago. It's been a shooting range and it's been a, it's been a place to store abandoned vehicles that were you know, stored there for a long time, contaminating the soil and then removed, so it's really not a clean piece of property at this point in time. Third, the limestone aggregate found along the Route fifteen corridor is, is high quality and suitable for concrete used at low and high-rise structures as well as asphalt used for the Guam roads and parking lots. As such, it is the only natural resource in Guam aside from our aquifer with a defined commercial value. The Guam construction industry currently requires one and a half million to two million cubic yards of aggregate per year. Make no mistake here, Guam's continuing growth will find the aggregate necessary. Other viable options are private properties now being masqueraded and developable landforms for future housing, commercial and industrial development, as well as hundreds of acres along the eastern shoreline of Anderson Air Force Base where the military buildup. Bill sixteen thirty seven provides all the answers. It transforms a passive asset into millions in revenues for the Tomorrowland Trust to improve existing homestead lots. It provides many new homestead lots or developable pads for revenue-producing Guam tenants. It maintains C L T C ownership of the property. It captures the market value of C L T C of a natural resource that is available at other, at, at other comparable properties and assures C L T C of the optimum return due to competitive bid requirement for the award. C L T C should move ahead under its existing authority to pursue this opportunity for transforming the lot fifty four twelve real estate asset into a productive revenue-producing endeavor. Public Law thirty three dash ninety five provides for a means to designate certain C L T C properties for commercial lease and particularly for aggregate excavation based on a competitive bid basis to generate revenues for C L T. We believe this bill will open the door for C L T C to capitalize one of its assets to achieve its mandated mission for developing homesteads and for generating revenues to compensate those whose lands cannot be returned. Please note that with the passage of this bill, C L T must, C L T C must undertake the following. They must formally determine that lot fifty four twelve should be used for homestead lots or for commercial leasing such as a government center. The sixty acre portion of the lot to be masqueraded must be designated by C L T C as part of the not to exceed nine percent of C L T C land inventory that is not required for leases to Tomorrow's for residential, subsistence agriculture or subsistence and therefore available for commercial leasing. Note that such nine percent designation may not technically it may be technically unnecessary since a result of this lease may be a land form that accommodates homestead lots and subsequently returned to C L T C. C L T C must seek specific approval from the Guam Legislature for mineral extraction on the sixty acre portion of the lot fifty four twelve. A C L T C or its agent guida will prepare the competitive R F P, issue, select an award to the entity determined to be responsible and responsive as defined in Guam's procurement law to the requirements stipulated by the C L T C. Consequently, we ask that the bill includes specific language to assure the C L T C will undertake these, those following steps and solicit this competitive bid and the Guam Legislature approves the mineral extraction on the sixty acre portion of the lot. Thank you Chairman Sin Augustine for scheduling this hearing. Although it was scheduled on May twenty second, the very first day that we went into condition of readiness too, I'm glad it's finally come around that we could, you have this hearing on this bill. You've allowed me to speak frankly about this opportunity to advance the mutual interest of C L T C revenue generations, homestead development, and Gov Guam lease opportunities and the Guam construction industry. I've got a few slides that might be of interest. I've attached copies for you, but I think we have them up on the video. Basically, this is an aerial view just showing on the left side, that's where a grading was started by a company called Mariana Stone. That was underway to put in a shopping center or some kind of a development there until the landowners of the property got into a dispute and that was stopped. Still under dispute. And then you see the G P A G W A facility there. And then what's not shown on this, but some of the landowners or land people that were living on the land were given lots up in the right-hand corner to live on under some procedure which I can show later on. And then the rest of it, the sixty acres is the rest of the property that we're, that we're talking about. It goes all the way down to the ocean. We are not proposing going any lower than, that, that we should go any lower than the two hundred foot elevation and preserve all the limestone forest and everything along the ocean side, which is probably twenty, probably twenty to thirty acres of the property. Leave that in its natural state. It's quite beautiful if you've ever, you know, been down to that property, but leave that in its natural state. So we're only actually talking about thirty acres, maybe forty acres. It's actually would be graded to the end use. So it's, it's a little bit smaller than what we were talking about sixty, depending on how low elevation you go. Again, we were proposing that two hundred feet elevation might be the right one, but it could go lower, which would give you more property for the land. Next slide. There are two options which will, you know, that will determine how much aggregate can be graded from the property. There is a, we call it an escarpment. There's a hill at the back of the property that raises up and then goes down all the way slopes all the way down to the ocean. If we don't take out that escarpment, there'll be less material taken from the property and less eventual housing lots and everything. That's not our recommendation, but that's up to the Tomorrowland Trust to decide on that. The next slide shows taking out that escarpment and it shows just a picture of house lots or houses on the, on the property to show what can be can be done on it, right, grading it in two pads or three pads, you know, to build houses on it. This will be some of the most beautiful lots on the island. They'll have a Pacific Ocean view and, and you know, it's, it would be a beautiful piece of property when we get done grading that when the, if this property is graded in this matter. The next slide shows a slide that we had W B Flores present showing how government buildings would look on the property. You see the existing G P A G W A. On the left of that, there's some government buildings on a road going down to the property. The lots you see up in the top hand, left-hand portion of that, those are the ones that are are being occupied by these, I guess they were deeded, those lots, these landowners. And then down below, you see some proposed government, government buildings and this is showing this is showing the grading of the, of the lots to the two hundred foot elevation. You can see how much area is left for the limestone forests on the right-hand side and how much green area that would be around the government buildings. This is just one scheme that we, we put together. There's infinite many other schemes that depending on what they want to do with the property and what the end use of the property is going to be. That's all I have. I, I, I fully agree with what the Tomorrowland Trust is, is recommended on what should be required of the, of the of the winner of the, the bid that wins this property. I've been, we've been working on this property for, with the Tomorrowland Trust for over twenty-five years. We originally had a license to go in and, and do an archaeological study, an environmental study, put together a couple of grading plans. We paid, we paid our fee of five hundred dollars a month while we were doing this to the Tomorrowland Trust. We had an agreement that we would come up with a license agreement. We never got to the point where we would, would negotiate the royalty of what would be paid on the, on the land for this. Then the decision was come to give a portion of it to the G W A and G P A and a portion to those landowners that were on there. And then the new public law came out that said it must be competitively bid, so you know, that's, we've been trying since all of that to, to bring this property up to this point where you know, it could be developed and these revenues could be made by the Tomorrowland Trust. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'd like to also recognize my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon, Senator Amanda Shelton and Senator Brown. I'll begin with my co-sponsor, Senator Roy Canahtan. If you have any questions for the two individuals on the panel.
Thank you, Mister Johnson. Appreciate your testimony and Mister Cruz. Appreciate your time today. I don't have any real further questions. Your, your drawings already show your intent and I think it's the, it's an opportunity for the Tomorrowland Trust to find some, you know, solution to its dire situation. So that's the reason why we're trying to think outside of the box, right? Otherwise, we're just going to keep waiting for more lands like war claims. So let's get it done and let's move forward because if the program isn't working right now, what do you need? You need money. You need to get the program stood up with infrastructure. This possibly can be an option, right? Once you guys start creating access down to the ravine because if it already had, had been quarried for the back road, so there's enough material there to be removed and still enough space for residential areas. Granted that the infrastructure is in place, right? So again, thank you guys for your testimony and I really appreciate you guys' time today.
Thank you Senator Q. Senator Tidaway, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mister Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues. And of course, thank you so much for being here to testify. For Tomorrowland Trust, you know, as I'm reading the, the bill, Mister Cruz, first, was this bill something that you wanted, the Tomorrowland Trust wanted? Was this something that you brought to one of the senators to create this bill or this is new to you?
We, we didn't
You didn't?
Approach any senator.
Okay, okay. So my next question then is, there's a section in the bill. I don't know if you have a copy of the bill. It'll be helpful as I, can we get, can he get a copy, please? So Mister Cruz, go to, go to page two of the bill, okay? And in page two, you'll see on, on, to the left-hand side, the, the numbering, go to line twenty-two, section two, you'll see it, okay. It says here that the Tomorrowland Trust shall immediately determine whether the undeveloped portion of lot five four one two falls within nine percent of its total remaining unassigned Tomorrowland Trust land area inventory. What does that mean?
Public Law thirty three dash ninety five put a cap on the amount of acreage that can be commercially leased.
Okay, speak, speak a little bit more because I know the acoustics in here, as best if you can get as close to the mic as possible.
Public Law thirty three dash ninety five put a cap on the amount of acreage Tomorrowland Trust can lease. So when that was passed and enacted into law, C L T C took the unassigned inventory, unleashed property, amount of property, took nine percent of that and that's our nine percent threshold or cap.
Okay, so in this bill, it says, what does that mean? To you, what would it mean?
So if we haven't reached a nine percent of property that we can commercially lease, then this
So it doesn't allow you to go above that nine percent then, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It just stays within the nine percent?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and this, and according to your read on this legislation, it, does it stay within the nine percent?
I, I believe so.
It does? Okay, so it meets that threshold?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's important. The second one is on the same, okay, so it shall be extracted. Upon finding, now the next page, on page three on the very top on line three, upon finding that the undeveloped portion of lot fifty fifty four one two falls within the C S nine total remaining unassigned inventory and upon approval of Tomorrowland Trust, the Legislature of Guam for mineral extracting the Tomorrowland Trust shall immediately announce a competitive request for proposal for license. request for proposal for license now for grading. Since this bill was not of your doing, Chamorland Trust doing, and you're looking at this, have you gone to Guam EPA to ask them, you know, their opinion about this bill and the, the area in which it's going to be graded and what is required of it and something like...
No, we have not, but...
Okay. What's the first thing you'll do then? Well, since you had the bill and you're here, and I know that your director is off-island right now, and sometimes you're not given the authority to do certain things, so if you have not, then I recommend that you do. I, I do see the, the warning sign in your, in your testimony. You know, I saw the caution because of the OPA's report and the grading that you're concerned about, which gives me comfort knowing that there could be some issues with this and that you're going to thoroughly look at it. So, I recommend that you do go to Guam EPA. You bring this and the map and look at this area because a, a lot of things can happen after grading is done. You know, a lot of people think it's, it's, you grade this, you know, you're going to have lots of area to build houses on, but it's the repercussions that happen after, you know, the loss of vegetation, the loss of, of land that, well, cause erosion, you know, erosion is a, is a real huge issue. You're right next to the ocean. So, we saw what happened when they put up the solar farms down in, you know, near Marble Cave and what happened there. I mean, that's, it, it can cause a lot of damage is, is my concern. So, you have yet to check out EPA with regards to this bill and this location?
That is correct.
Okay. So, please do so, okay? And I'm looking forward to Chamorland Trust's revised testimony on the safety, the environmental safety of this area and anything else that, that you can see that could be an issue. I, I definitely don't want to put in legislation forcing Chamorland Trust to do something that they, you know, feel it's, it's not conducive to them or would serve the greater good of, of our island. So, I, I'm looking forward to another revised testimony after you've done more research to it. Other than that... Okay. It says here that the funds that are generated from the leases from, okay, the funds that are generated from Chamorland Trust, what, what account does that money go into?
Currently, currently the Chamorland Trust has three active funds.
Oh, three. Okay.
So, the first active fund is the Chamorland Trust Operations Fund.
Okay.
So, all commercial leases executed prior to October 2015, all those revenues go into our Operations Fund. For all commercial, commercial leases that were executed after October 2015, they go into our Survey and Infrastructure Fund. And then the third fund is the Loan Guarantee Fund. That revenue sources from the real property taxes, also known as payment in lieu of taxes from our lessees.
From your lessees?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have, and all three accounts are still receiving revenue?
They are all still generating revenue. Yes, ma'am.
The first one that you mentioned especially, right?
Our Operations Fund.
The Operations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But that fund is also declining.
Has declined considerably on the Operations Funds, right?
Yes, ma'am. Due to maturing of leases or expiring of leases that were executed prior to October 2015.
Would there be any recommendation that any of these funds that are generated from this project help to subsidize? I mean, it would be a request from the Chamorland Trust because your operations are very critical, you know? It might be something you might look into, okay? Because I, I know that we need some funding to subsidize your operations because of the Who's your attorney at Chamorland Trust?
Currently, our attorney is Assistant Attorney General Kristen Finney.
Oh, so he's out of the Attorney General's office?
Yes, ma'am.
The name of the person?
Kristen Finney.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry. Okay. And have they had an opportunity to look at this legislation?
I believe so.
They did?
Yes.
And, and they provide you any comments?
Not as of...
Okay. So, they looked at it, but they haven't gotten back to you on it? Okay. Well, please, you know, follow up with that. I'd like to hear what they have to say on it. Okay. Other than that, you know, I greatly appreciate your time here, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator Sinikus?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for you, sir. What is the current state of our, of our, the aggregate market here? And are we running out of... Okay. Could you elaborate? Could you...
You know, we, we've been mining, it, ours is an actual quarry, one of the few on, on the island, at Hawaiian Rock for 65 years this year. I don't know how much in total we've taken out over those years, but, but we've been conserving that rock that's there and bringing in from other sources. Of course, one of them was the Guam Raceway Park and several other locations on the island. We have another quarry up in, well, another, yeah, it's been a quarry for many years up in Mount Santa Rosa that we're going to be moving to, to start bringing rock from there pretty soon. And we have aggregate left on our Fiddian Quarry that, there. But with this buildup that's going on, there's a tremendous need that we haven't seen in a long time. So, we are, we are within a few years of being, really have scarce resources to draw from. We're looking at private property that will supplement that. We're looking at this property that would give us four or five years of aggregate if we were to, was successful winner on that. We're talking to the landowners of the property I showed you adjacent to 5412 that was formerly being graded by Marianna Stone and then other small pieces of property. But, but this one would provide the aggregate for, you know, the next few years. Our competitor is Smith Bridge. They're also looking at, you know, where they're going to get their rock from. They're running out of rock. They're looking at adjacent property. They're adjacent also to a very large piece of Chamorland Trust that, and we're actually working with them to look at grading that property for homesteads and being able to use that, that rock for these military buildup. It's not as far along as this bill, but it's another possibility. We prefer this one because it's next to Hawaiian Rock. You know, that one's next to them. So, but this one is not a, it's not a long-term future. We, on this property, we had hoped to bid it, win it, and get in and grade it, and we'd be out of there in three or four years, maybe five years. And then it could be turned back to be a useful form.
At your current rate of production in your own inventory, how, how many more years do you have with your, your current, if you don't mind?
Probably three, four, five years, depending on, you know, how many jobs we were successful in supplying the material to. But, you know, this, this, this next year, there's a tremendous amount of work that's coming out. I think the, we estimated it's about $2.5 billion, just of military construction coming out with the, the 2024 NDAA and, and the, the work that the, is coming from the Japanese for their part of the construction, military construction. And that doesn't include the hotels that are being planned and condominiums being planned and all that other work that's coming. Doesn't, there's a lot of road construction that's being planned that we need good quality aggregate for that, which is only available along the coastlines of the island.
I have a, I want, I mean, it, it seems that the general operations of quarrying is around that area. Is there, have, and you've been in the business long enough, have there been other areas on the island that may have been identified as aggregate-rich as, as well?
Yeah, but they're underneath Anderson Air Force Base and the Navy Base. Those are tremendous quality aggregate under those two facilities. But the aggregate that, not aggregate, but the grading of the, the shooting range up north has provided very good quality aggregate that the contractor used in his own work to do, do the performance of those things. The north tip of the island has got good quality aggregate. There's property adjacent to our, we call it our Jigo Quarry up in Mount Santa Rosa. There's about 400 acres there that has very good quality aggregate, and it's, it can't be developed right now in its, in its state. That is another possibility for something similar to 5412 that could be, could be leveled off for housing or, or other uses.
And all the material that goes out, you know, and do you guys also recycle some of the materials that over, over time, you guys reclaim, like some of the roads and stuff?
We do. We do. Unfortunately, Guam is not quite up to the state where, you know, the US is and use, the use of recycled materials for roads. We do it on, use it on a lot of private roads. Some of the village roads, we use recycled material, but they don't allow us to use it on the airfields or the military projects yet. That's coming, I think. They're doing it on the mainland for those projects. So, we would like to be able to do that, but we don't generate a lot like they do on the mainland. You know, they'll take whole highways down, you know, and mill up material. You know, the, the best source of material we have is when we work on the, the runways, when we take the aggregate that's on the runways and resurface the runways, so.
I ordered some cement a couple of weeks ago. I had to wait in line like a couple, maybe almost a month. Is, is, is that due to some type of shortage, or was that because of the storm?
There, you know, the, there's only one supplier of cement actively right now, the importing of the powdered cement. The, the other one got damaged by the, the typhoon. His pier got damaged. So, we're, like in the last week, you know, we ran out of cement for a few days because the ship was delayed. They're trying to turn it around faster now until the other facility gets up. We're getting busier in our, in our work. You know, the, the other thing along with the concrete is the concrete pumps. You know, we have about six of them in our company, and they're scheduled most days. And people, maybe if your job needed a concrete pump, we had to delay you a bit because they were all scheduled.
Just wanted to, because somebody, somebody mentioned there was a shortage of rock, so...
No, that's not causing us much concern now. We are going to be working extra shifts to try and make sure we have enough sand for the concrete and those kind of things because that's, it's diff, you know, we manufacture the sand. We don't use beach sand or any natural sand. So, that's a slow process in manufacturing.
One more question.
Yeah.
Would it be, would it be cheaper to import rock?
No. You know, the, we import the rock for the surfacing of the roads, and rough cost of that is about, by the time we get it to the plant to produce is about $125 a, a ton. And we can buy rock from Smith Bridge for, you know, around $30 a ton. So, it's about four times the cost to import.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, that I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Senator Amanda Shelton, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hafaday, good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for being here today. Mr. Johnson, you started mentioning, you talked a little bit about their, this property previously being used as a quarry. So, can you give us a little more background about that? Maybe, Mr. Cruz, you know as well what happened in the time period that it was used as a quarry until today? How, how did that happen?
I'm sorry, that, that happened before my time.
It happened before my time, too, so...
Okay.
Yeah. I think it was, I don't know if some of that was used in the construction of the back road and, and maybe some for Anderson Air Force Base way back. But, you know, that would have been way back. Hawaiian Rock started in, in 1958 to work on the airfield up at Anderson Air Force Base. And I think that quarry was in operation either at that time or before that time.
Okay. Way before all of our time here.
Yeah.
But I was curious to know if there was a specific reason that it was stopped, you, being used as a quarry, if there's something that we should know about the property or any information that we should have. But, okay, I understand it was for specific projects back in the day, and when that area was developed, it was kind of left alone. And so, there, you shared with us certain plans that were discussed over the years for different government agencies in this area. And so, were there environmental studies done?
We did. We did do an environmental study, and we did an archaeological study.
Okay. And anything of interest that we should know about?
Um, you know, there's, there's a few cycad trees which are basically very unhealthy now, you know, because there are not many of them left on the island due to the, what's happened with the bugs that get to them. There's probably some trees that aren't endangered. We did not find any, any snails or, or, you know, fruit bats or any of those things on the property. But the, but to be honest, we, we did that survey 15 years ago, maybe? So, the same guy that did the survey is doing work now on the island in other areas for Duennas and Associates. So, it wouldn't be very hard to, to do that survey again because he, he's walked the entire property and knows it very well. Archaeological is a new animal now, so, you know, I, I, I don't think we found, saw anything archaeological on the, on the property, but that would have to be looked at again.
Okay. Thank you very much. And obviously, I think it's very important, there's a lot of discussion, a conversation about, you know, what's being found on, on these properties or any properties that are being developed or used in a certain way. And so, if we were to support this, this legislation, which I think the intent is, you know, really noble of our sponsor and our co-sponsors here to help our Chamorland Trust Commission continue to generate revenue and bring more opportunity, help our private industry continue to support the buildup and other development on the island, I want to make sure we're not, you know, going to face some big roadblocks along the way. And I'd like to know all the information upfront if we can. So, I, I appreciate the information that you have today, and I think maybe there's still a little bit more homework to do, but nothing that is going to stop these guys from trying. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly recognize, you know, the need to get aggregate, but I'm a little concerned about the bill because it seems more focused on getting the aggregate than it does trying to facilitate the needs of the Chamorland Trust. You know, even though I've, I've, I've not always been pleased with the performance of the Chamorland Trust, and I've, I've spent a couple of years intimately working with Chamorland Trust when I was up at the University of Guam, and we had an agreement to assist them with their agricultural, implementation of their agricultural leases. And then also, before our, our contract ended with them, we worked on the commercial leases. So, we had the whole issue with regards to the Raceway Park and the lack of proper monitoring at the time of the amount of aggregate that was being taken out of the, the Raceway Park. Certainly, it's not an issue of not supporting racing on Guam, but it was a question of ensuring that the money that was intended to be compensated to the land trust was indeed the case. And unfortunately, it's not always been the case. And Chamorland Trust historically has almost been at the short end with regards to these commercial leases, including those that have not paid in a timely basis, that have continued to use Chamorland Trust land and not properly compensate. And then also the challenge of Chamorland Trust itself of being as aggressive as it needs to be to ensure proper collection. I would want more information on this, looking at the location of this property. Agriculture's not here. Guam EPA is not here to provide testimony. I'm not as familiar because I've not ever walked down this particular area of this property. I am concerned about the fact that the bottom portion is next to the coastline. I... I want to know what other plans beyond just excavation would happen here. I was at Guam EPA when we did the construction of the Meilu Golf Course and there were areas there that were reserved for limestone forests. I don't know how much of this is original limestone forest, but I think we need to take those things into consideration versus total excavation and destruction of these areas. I mean, I understand the need to put land aside. I understand the need for aggregate, but I think we also need to balance the approach. And I, I have a little reservation because as I read this bill, I, it, it sounds more of an agenda to address excavation than it does to actually look at these properties in terms of whichever, be it for, for construction of homes or if there's other government need for it, but if it's land trust land, I would hope that it would be used for that. Are you, if I can ask for, for Tomorrowland Trust, is this being looked at as a commercial lease, this entire area?
By the way, the bill is written, we're assuming it's going to be a commercial lease.
This entire area commercial lease? Is it commercial lease just for the excavation or the actual use of the property after it's excavated?
Based on the project or the proposal in the bill, it's calling, first it, it requires us to determine whether it exceeds the nine percent of the total unassigned inventory. So automatically we assume that this will be a commercial lease that will be awarded through the RFP process.
You can determine that without legislation, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't need us to put that in law to determine whether or not this falls in? Is this something that the commission itself has decided or we, if we pass this bill, are we deciding it for you?
I would have to get back to you on that answer, ma'am.
Okay, but you don't, has, you don't know at all if your commission members have entertained this, this issue or the purpose of this land?
I will get back to you with the response.
I appreciate it. Sorry, my voice is eluding me today. With that, Mr. Chair, really, I'm just raising those concerns. I think I'd like to see that addressed before we move forward with this bill. Thank you.
Understood. I just want to make it very clear, the bill was intended was because there's many properties that Tomorrowland Trust property has that are not suitable for leases. Now, part of this bill was to get you to get somebody to make it suitable. Cause it's obvious Tomorrowland Trust ain't going anywhere. Property sitting and the list of folks to include myself hasn't got a lease. Okay, I don't know how many other colleagues because I signed up in ninety-five. But you know what? There's many folks that have called me about, when can I get my lease? When are they going to grade? When are they going to fix the problem? When are they going to make it accessible? I know of folks that are in that area near where we're talking about and I visit them and it's almost, I'm just surprised that you were able, that Tomorrowland Trust was even able to give a lease. They can barely even do anything with all the rocks and everything. That's all, that's what this bill is about. Lease it out so somebody can fix it, make it available to be leased for homestead. Do you want to talk about government building? I brought up, I've been asking Tomorrowland Trust, do you have ten acres for revenue and tax? Haven't got an answer, I haven't got anything. My concern is to get these properties available, cleared, suitable to be issued for folks to get their lease and build their homes. And there's other bills that are approaching. And with that, I thank you all for coming today and we will take the concerns of all my colleagues and make sure the appropriate amendments are, are placed, EPA's involvement and everybody else. And with that, there was no one else to testify on this bill. This hearing is now concluded. I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing, providing feedback and suggestions. Bill number one sixteen dash thirty-seven public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is two fifty-one and the bill will be, committee report will be done and then sent to the Committee on Jurisdiction. Thank you very much. Please have a nice day. Take care. Thank you. They're going to be heard until three o'clock, okay? So they can go ahead and put a recess until three o'clock, please, on the screen. Good afternoon. Hafaday, the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation is now called to order. Today is Monday, October second. The time now is three oh one. In compliance with open government law, the notice for this public hearing were posted on GovGuam Public Notice Portal KGTF PBS Channel twelve and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, September twenty-fifth, change one on September twenty-seventh, then on Thursday, September twenty-eighth. The bill that we will be hearing this, at this time is Bill number one twenty dash thirty-seven COR, introduced by Senator Amanda Shelton, corresponded by Senator Canata and myself, Senator Sinocine, Senator Jesse Luan, Senator Tina, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Senator Duane Snikless, Senator Will Parkinson. An act to amend, section one zero one one three of Article one, Chapter ten, Title twenty-two Guam Code annotated relative to strengthening workforce development by extending the sunset provision of the Guam Registered Apprentice Program for, for an additional five years. Physical note for Bill number one twenty dash thirty-seven COR was requested on May eighteen, twenty twenty-three. It will receive and disseminate to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on June twelve, twenty twenty-three. Those participating on the Bill one twenty dash thirty-seven COR are invited to the panel. They are. We have Selena Ashlin, we have Mr. John Flores, Juan Flores and Jerry Tovis. General rules for this public, you are invited to the panel, please come forward, por favor. General rules for this public hearing, please provide my legislative staff of any document for photocopying and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimonies shall be, testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of the general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room. For these proceedings and individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that joined me this afternoon. We have the author of the bill, Senator Amanda Shelton, co-sponsor also Senator Roy Canata and Senator Duane Snikless. And we have Senator Telo Tydwy, my vice chair, and Senator Joanne Brown. And with that, I'd like to ask Senator Amanda to give her opening statement and then we'll proceed to the panel and I do have one testimony that was submitted and is, and was asked to be read for the record. Senator Manishon, you can give your opening, please.
Sutusmasi, Mr. Chair. Thank you for scheduling this public hearing on Bill one two zero dash thirty-seven. An act to amend, section one zero one one three of Article one, Chapter ten, Title twenty-two Guam Code annotated, relative to strengthening workforce development by extending the sunset provision of the Guam Registered Apprentice Program for an additional five years. The bill is co-sponsored, as you said, by Senators Roy Canata, yourself, Mr. Chair, and Jesse Luhon, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, and Senators Sabina Perez and Duane Snikless and William Parkinson. Mr. Chair, this bill was introduced following comments offered by Dr. Mary Okada at GCC's budget hearing, which was held on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. In response to a question on whether GCC requires legislation to assist with specific initiatives of the college, President Okada replied that with respect to supporting employers, one of the issues that came up regularly was the impending termination of the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program, GRAP. At GCC's budget hearing, Dr. Okada suggested that unless the program is allowed to continue, the number of apprentices will At GCC's budget hearing, Dr. Okada suggested that unless the program is allowed to continue, the number of apprentices will significantly decrease. Dr. Okada further recognized the provision of childcare services for those interested in pursuing apprenticeship programs as an active discussion item among employers and GCC. Mr. Chair, established in July 2006 through Public Law 28-142, GRAP provides tax credits to companies that employ and support individuals through eligible apprenticeship programs. The law provides tax credits to eligible businesses equal to 50% of the qualified training costs paid or incurred by these businesses. Covered expenses include direct wages of apprentices, direct fringe benefits, medical and dental insurance, journeyman's wages, on-the-job training, instructor costs, academic and trade theory, training costs, books and tuition, and personal protective equipment. When the ship repair facility was identified for closure by the Base Realignment and Closure Commission, GRAP was created and designed to help replace the thousands of skilled workers who left Guam or retired from the workforce. While I recognize the military buildup and associated development projects place Guam in a position where we continue to rely heavily on external sources for skilled construction and other technical and professional services. I also acknowledge that GRAP has arguably helped to reduce this dependence on foreign workers. According to the Guam Department of Labor, there are approximately 630 active registered apprentices on Guam who earn income while learning skills and more than 50 occupations. Through GRAP, $17 million in tax credits have been issued, as of November 2022, to local businesses toward the salaries of apprentices who are trained into positions for which they may not otherwise qualify. On a yearly average, over 250 apprentices benefit from the program through more than 15 employers, with those numbers trending upward according to the Guam Department of Labor. With that, Mr. Chair, in consideration of the need to sustain our critical workforce development program and consistent with Public Law 35-39, which extended the sunset provision from 2019 to 2024, Bill 120-37 proposes to extend GRAP for another five-year period through 2029. I look forward to the testimonies today and our discussion this afternoon, including any recommendations and amendments that will help strengthen this bill and the support from our colleagues. Sizus Massey, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel in advance.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Now we will begin with Selena Ashland from the Guam Shipyard, and then we'll proceed with Mr. Juan Flores and Jerry Tovis. And after the three have spoken, then I will read the written testimony from GTA. All right, ma'am? Please just state your name and where you're from and let it loose.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Selena Ashland. I am the Guam Shipyard Registered Apprenticeship Program Administrator. Again, I thank you, honorable senators, for the opportunity to speak on our support for this Bill 120-37. I will read from the written testimony that I've submitted for record. Guam Shipyard began operations in 1997 as a privately, private locally owned and operated shipyard after the base realignment and closure of the former Navy Ship Repair Facility. And we provide vital ashore industrial support, repair, maintenance, overall, and emergency repair services for the visiting 7th Fleet, submarines under Squadron 15th, the resident tenders USS Frank Cable, USS MRS Land, and commercial vessels. As an inaugural and active participant of the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program, we continue to prioritize and execute workforce development programs to sustain and grow a viable local ship repair workforce. Guam Shipyard, along with our industry partners across the nation in shipbuilding, repair, and maintenance, face a shortage of skilled workers in various specialized trades. This trend is driven by the fact that the current workforce is retiring and companies are unable to successfully transition these highly skilled positions to new hires due to a lack of skilled worker resource pool. Accordingly, small businesses like Guam Shipyard must execute robust workforce development programs to meet workload demands amidst continually rising costs to train a workforce. Through the continued administration of incentive programs such as the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program, businesses like Guam Shipyard can feasibly and effectively execute training programs. The continued success of the GRAP is rooted in a strong private-public partnership. The most common detrimental factor in a privately-run program is a lack of funding available to train. Almost, most small businesses are unable to absorb direct operational costs and costs to administer and execute a workforce development program. The GRAP tax credit must be continued for small businesses to train apprentices in the ship repair industry. The relief that this tax credit provides businesses will reap a direct and positive benefit to all those involved and engaged in the GRAP. Specifically for Guam Shipyard, this tax credit assists in carrying out a successful apprenticeship training of a local workforce, enabling us to maintain a highly skilled workforce to support military and commercial customers and encourage them to bring more ship repair work to Guam. As military buildup progresses and military presence increases in Guam, we need to assure that ship repair work is performed by its residents. The passage of this bill strengthens workforce development by extending the sunset provision for an additional five years and supports the ship repair industry's sustainability. Guam Shipyard appreciates the opportunity to submit this testimony and expresses support for Bill 120-37 to be passed by this legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Either be Mr. Tovis or Mr. Flores, which one, sir? The direct acting director, all right, sir, you're first.
I appreciate it, Chairman. Co-chairs, honorable senators, thank you for being here today. My name is Gerard Tovis and Director David Delasola sends his regards. Thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony on Bill 120-37COR. The Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program, also known as GRAP, was established to provide tax incentives to businesses that will provide high-quality, industry-driven career pathways for workers while they earn and learn simultaneously. Apprenticeship trains workers in the skills needed in the specific profession while teaching the importance of its application in an actual work environment. Since its inception in 2006, GRAP has benefited thousands of apprentices who are now working in career fields that have supported Guam's economic growth. Since 2009, GRAP has provided 52.7 million in tax credit incentives to dozens of businesses that employ apprentices. These businesses are entitled to tax credit against their gross receipts tax liability equal to 50% of the eligible training costs paid or incurred by the business. In the last four years alone, this program has provided $17 million in tax credits to employers. The Guam Department of Labor works with more than 15 employers and over 250 apprentices every year, with that number projected to double in the next five years as the construction industry booms and more funding becomes available from the Manpower Development Fund to support apprenticeship programs. In 2011, Guam was successful in achieving designation as a state apprenticeship agency. This meant Guam was able to approve apprenticeship standards unique only to Guam and not to submit its standards to the U.S. Department of Labor Office of Apprenticeship for Approval. GDOL will continue to market the advantages of apprenticeship and the benefits of the GRAP tax credit program. Since July of this year, 11 participating employers have registered 42 new apprentices, which is about 14 new apprentices each month. GDOL's goal is to increase the number of apprentices by 100 no later than July, excuse me, no later than June 30, 2024. And it's evident, it is evident that GRAP has been a great benefit not to just the employees and the apprentices, but to the businesses as well. This program has been pivotable, has been pivotal in producing a skilled workforce in industries that are in high demand, attracting businesses to invest in Guam, leading to job creation and more vibrant economy. Furthermore, the program aligns with national workforce development goals, making it eligible for federal funding and support. This financial backing can help expand and improve programs, ensuring its sustainability and effectiveness in the long term. GRAP promotes lifelong learning and career advancement. Apprentices not only gain initial skills, but often continue their education and training, becoming highly skilled professionals who contribute to Guam's growth and innovation. As the agency responsible for overseeing the administration of GRAP, GDOL is in full support of Bill 120-37COR. GRAP's contribution is essential to meet the needs of both job seekers and employers. GRAP also drives economic prosperity and align with broader national goals. Don't clue me, Sizus Massey, for giving our testimony at the Guam Department of Labor.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
My name is Juan Flores and I'm with the Guam Department of Labor and one of my responsibilities is working directly with a state apprenticeship agency, which is in the Department of Labor. The Guam Department of Labor supports passage of Bill 120-37COR, which will continue to address the current and future workforce development challenges in our island. The establishment of the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program, or GRAP, with tax credits for sponsoring employers, has achieved the goals of employing necessary staff members for government and private industry employers and developing career pathways for participating employees. The GRAP incentive has led to noticeable results and should continue to support workforce development efforts in the near and distant future. Future needs in the workforce development warrant the continuation of GRAP and the clear message that the development of career pathways and the need to fill critical positions requiring effective instruction and training are still in the works. The implementation of the Broadband Equity and Access Development Program, proposed by the Guam Office of Infrastructure and Policy and Development, calls for efforts by skilled professionals to achieve the goals of the program. Skill enhancement, employment recruitment and placement, and career advancement for the B program can be achieved through the GRAP. Contractors can arrange to carry out the activities in the telecommunications, construction, and renewable energy fields. New and incumbent workers can use the Registered Apprenticeship Route to enhance their skills and work towards career pathways with livable wages. The Guam Department of Labor, along with the Guam Community College, is currently working with representatives of aviation companies to initiate apprenticeship programs for airframe and power plant mechanics. This initiative addresses short-term needs for aviation mechanics, growth and the need for more mechanics for current and future aviation companies, and succession planning for the advancement and retirement of current mechanics. Considering the critical need for aviation services for various purposes and at different levels, a continued and enhanced investment in this apprenticeship program relieves anxiety about the role our island plays in meeting the needs of our economy and the economies of communities in our region. The construction of military facilities, the consideration for new hotels, and the aging state of current educational, commercial, and residential facilities calls for the development of more skilled workers to address ongoing and major maintenance projects for the foreseeable future. Apprenticeships, such as the ones for building, maintenance, repairs, will enable contractors, small businesses in maintenance repairs, the government of Guam, and military installations to attend to necessary maintenance and repairs and meet the island's needs when natural disasters hit our island. The U.S. Department of Labor is recognizing and supporting apprenticeships in professional fields such as nursing, engineering, and education. These critical fields can be supported by developing and enhancing routes for young men and women to pursue their professional degrees while they are benefiting from paid work-based learning experiences that preclude turning to student loans or other employment activities that do not support career goals. The government of Guam, military administrative services, small and large businesses, even our educational institutions, are facing and will continue to face vacancies in critical positions due to retirements and relocations. Keeping a robust apprenticeship approach to upskilling current employees and enticing new employees to consider positions leading to career pathways will have an effect on filling and refilling positions by providing necessary instruction and on-the-job learning experiences, leading to national journey worker recognition. While GRAP focuses on tax credits for private businesses, continued apprenticeship activities contribute to the critical mass of participants in related training instruction courses necessary to sustain the completion of apprenticeship requirements. The Guam Department of Labor looks forward to passage of Bill 120-37COR and thanks to bill sponsors for introducing this important measure to ensure the continued success of our apprenticeship programs. Your support for workforce development will have a positive impact on our community. Sizus Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Now at this time, I will read the testimonies submitted by Daniel Tadinko from Tele Guam Holdings LLC, DBA, GTA. How for day, Chairman Sinocci and committee members, on behalf of the 497 GTA employees, I submit this testimony in favor of Bill 120-37. Being in the unique position of formerly being a government-owned and operated entity to become a privatized telecommunications corporation, GTA fully understands and appreciates the value of the apprenticeship program. As a dynamic industry where transformative change and technology waits for nobody, telecommunications truly requires qualified, certified, professionally-trained individuals to be able to handle and operate intricate state-of-the-art equipment and product for the reliable delivery of services to consumers 24 by 7 by 365. When GTA was privatized back in 2004, its primary purpose of employees had been proficient and expert in copper wireline infrastructure, after all cellular technology and internet had only started to splash its ways onto our shores back then. GTA's shareholders then, as we continue emphatically today, noted the need to retool and train our employees based to pivot toward the emerging telecommunications technologies, not only for the good of the company and the consumer, but also for the benefit of our legacy employees to learn new skills for their own professional and self-growth. The need to develop the local workforce with meaningful skills and educational opportunity is essential for our community to flourish. This is particularly important in a job market where there aren't enough residents, either qualified and certified or available to work in jobs and professions requiring highly skilled employees. Companion to this, of course, is the need for highly-paid jobs and careers to be available for those who are qualified and interested in living in and contributing to our island. At GTA, we are proud to be consistent partner, not only our employees who are interested in professional development, but we are grateful for the opportunity to have the Guam Community College and the Department of Labor to have this, to have stood up and administered workforce development, this successful program such as the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program. Plus, it's good for the long-term benefit of our community to have public-private partnership like this. Our children and our families won't have to go abroad in search of good paying and meaningful employment and careers off island. We have availed of the apprenticeship training program with the Guam Registered Apprentice Program for several years. Since the program started, we have had 238 enroll and participate. These GTA employees, both legacy employees as well as young, high potential employees, receive related training instructions from the Guam Community College with an instruction term length of two to four years. term length of two to four years. Additionally, they had between 2,000 to 8,000 hours of on-the-job training based on their chosen occupations. GTA personnel received training certificates, certification from this program in the following U.S. Department of Labor Registered Occupation: Computer System Analyst, Customer Service Representative, Field Engineer, Graphic Designer, Heavy Equipment Operator, Internet Working Technician, Live Line Installer and Repairer, Maintenance Repairer/Builder, Operating Engineer, Heavy Construction Equipment Mechanic, Parts Salesperson, Telecommunication Technician. Upon program completion, these GTA employees or personnel received salary adjustment upwards. Consequently, these employees delivered greater productivity, and the tax base for the community grew. GTA enables employees to participate in this program and support it also with covering costs, while ensuring the employees continue with their jobs and salaries. Just in the past three and a half years, training cost for our employees in this program are approximately 567,000, a sum which we are more than happy to render, even during the COVID period. A return on greater skilled and educated workforce is valuable. This program reduced turnover and costs associated with recruiting, hiring, and training new employees. It also resulted in greater pay for employees, and greater productivity and efficiency, and greater delivery of services to our customers. At a time when we are making significant multimillion-dollar investment in our community with our cable landing station and island-wide network build-outs and upgrades, we will continue to push for more training and education and workforce development for our personnel and those who may want to join GTA. We urge the committee and the legislature to extend the sunset provision of the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program. This is a successful program which needs to continue for the economic development of our island. Thank you, Daniel J. Tadinco. With that, I will now ask, would you like to give me last? Okay, Senator, would you like to ask any questions? Nothing? Senator Tello, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The opportunity. You know, I'd like to read the fiscal note that was provided on this bill, and it states Let me read this, too. "The tax credit and sunshine provision is to remain in effect December 30, 2024. However, the subject bill wishes to extend the provisions of GRAP to remain in effect until December 2029. As stated on the legislative findings and intent, the GRAP has provided approximately 43 million in tax credit in the last 13 years, with an average annual tax credit of about The Bureau notes that the tax credits may total about 16,538 in non-generated revenue over the additional five years." The Department of Labor also notes that two management analyst positions are required to continue the program, with an estimated cost impact of 141,929, which is inclusive of salaries and benefits. So, my question is to DOL. Do you have these two management analysts already up and running, or is it says it's required? The positions are required, or are they currently on staff?
Right, they're currently not on staff, Senator.
I'm sorry?
They're currently not on staff. We leave it to our, basically, Gary Hiles, who's our economic... He takes care of the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and these people are supposed to be under him, but yes, we're going through applications, and we're trying to find the right fit for this.
And for the $141,000, where is that funding going to come from to pay for these two additional positions?
Most likely probably from the MDF funds as well.
MDF funds, which comes from?
Which comes from when construction companies bring in their laborers, they have to apply in the application all those monies that come in through the applications. We give 70% to GCC.
70%? That's what I was wondering how much.
And then the 30% comes to us again for the... And since this anticipation all the way to 2029 will also build the military buildup and all the other, as Dr. Flores mentioned, the communications, all these new industries that are popping up, we're definitely going to need the support.
30% goes to, 70% goes to GCC, and then how much is the 30% go to?
Goes to, stays with us to continue.
It stays with you, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd be pulling the funding from that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So these positions, will they stay in effect for five years, or will they also end their term in five years, or you just keep them on?
No, I really don't think so. I haven't thought five years myself, but I'm pretty sure the whole idea was to... We need succession planning as well, I'm sure, Gary, at the same time for our economist, and by then also they should be stapled within the Department of Labor.
So my question then is, if this has already been in effect, you know, and has generated, you know, or at least there's been tax credits that have been availed to these companies, then why haven't you had two analyst, management analysts then? I mean, what were you using then that you can't use the same staff for the next five years? Why do you need these two individuals? I mean, you've been doing the program for a while already, and it's been availing, you know, almost 43 million in tax credits in the last 13 years, so why all of a sudden now you need these two analysts?
How do I explain it in more simpler terms? Like I said, for the BLS, Senator, it would be the succession planning that we need for that division as well, and I believe the...
Okay, let's put it this way. If you don't hire them, is the program still going to be okay?
Yes, most definitely. Most definitely.
Because it has been for the last 13 years.
Yes, yes.
You know, so just adding two more jobs, you know, building the government to even larger than it should be, that's what we're doing here. You know, regardless of the money is coming from this, you know, these certain tax or fees, you know, coming from these H2 workers coming in, it can go to other areas that are desperately needed. Why are we creating two more jobs when something that's been already working for 13 years? I just don't understand. So it looks like the money can be spent elsewhere that's needed.
Right, I understand.
Okay, that's all my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Tadinco. Senator Ashenickles, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No comments. I support the measure.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I did want to inquire, Department of Labor, how do you verify that these trainings have taken place? How do you verify among these businesses that are getting these credits that the training has taken place? And how is a training program set up according to what standard, simply what the employer decides needs to be, or are there certain positions require certain national standards?
Yes, most definitely. All training standards are employer-driven, and all the standards are reviewed by our state apprenticeship agency, which Dr. Flores is now a team of, and... Okay, thank you. So we go through the national standards of U.S. Department of Labor Employment Training Agency, and it's built now by Guam, and it's all employee-driven and employer-driven, and however, the employer would like that particular position to be as part of their team in apprenticeship. That's how it's carried over, and they also drive what kind of classes they would need for this position to... Their employer, their employee to thrive and drive through, so they would get those classes probably most likely from GCC, and once they're Guam Trades, for that matter, who's our eligible training providers, and they would train our, the staff, and at the same time get the work component through the journeyman, and hence just build the apprenticeship program for two, three, four, maybe in five years.
Do they set up their own programs within their own operations, or is this training provided by like the Trades Academy or GCC? How do they do that? Do they do that within their respective business? Because certainly some businesses may have a specialized skill set that they need for their employees to have, that is not something perhaps that they would do somewhere else. So how do they do that?
Senator, because GCC receives their portion of the manpower development funds, they provide tuitions for any kind of training that could support the apprenticeships. So that's one of the providers. And if employers are members of the Guam Contractors Association, then their involvement with the Trades Academy is taken care of. But there are some employers who choose to go outside of those two areas and find their own training programs, and they get a portion of that training, the cost for that training is part of their reimbursed cost from the business privilege tax. But again, going back to, the standards are actually national standards developed by the Department of Labor, but each employer chooses which standards are applicable to them. And, I mean, just in our recent discussions with aviation mechanics, right? There's no need for us to have a standard that mechanics on Guam need to learn about the de-icing of airplanes, even though that might be a standard for aviation mechanics. So whatever standards are most applicable to our island, the employers make the decision for those standards. And we do go, we keep track of the progression of training. So if the, when the apprenticeship is registered, they don't only register their standards, they register the related training instruction courses, and we keep track of when those courses have been offered, when those courses have been completed, and the number of hours of work-based learning that the apprentices go through within the company, so that those can be part of the reimbursement from the tax.
So if I was a business and I wanted to set up my own apprentice program, what steps would I need to do to put this in place so that I could, of course, take advantage of the opportunity to... I'm sorry.
Great. So the first thing...
Oh, no worries.
The first thing is, and this is going on a daily basis, where either we approach a company, because we now have an expansion grant for the apprenticeship program from the U.S. Department of Labor, so we're trying to get more apprenticeships set up, and part of that is to enhance diversity among apprentices. So if you had a company and you looked and said, hey, this job that I have in my company is an apprentice-able occupation, then we sit down, we look up the standards that Department of Labor suggests, and we ask you to make a decision about those standards. And then we start talking about where the training for those employees will come from, because the concept behind apprenticeship is that there is related training instruction, which is like learning the theory of that particular occupation, but there also has to be on-the-job training or work-based training, so that those, so that the instruction that's being given now matches the actual training within the company. And that instruction has to be carried out, that training has to be carried out by a journey worker who is designated by the company.
And do you, you look over that curriculum or whatever training that they have, and I mean, is this something ultimately Department of Labor to participate in this tax benefit? Is it something you have to put your stamp of approval to say, yes, we believe this is a right-sized training for this particular type of position?
Yes, and once, Felice De Pasini is really the person who's done this for a long time. If she looks at the related training instruction, and she looks at the on-the-job training that's going to be carried out, she then recommends to the director to approve that particular registered apprenticeship program. And GRAP is just a unique factor, right? I mean, registered apprenticeship programs are going on throughout the United States. For us, the key is providing the incentives for the company to continue to be involved in these programs.
If I can ask, Ms. Ashland, how does your company do outreach? Because we have a lot of people out there that are not working, that maybe have no training, and you know, the old days of, you know, your success route is going and getting higher education at a university institution. I mean, for a lot of young people now, that's not really the direction, and even the opportunity for future employment that might not be leading them down that road for a successful future career. So how does your company go out and recruit employees that perhaps, you know, don't have the type of training, may be hesitant because they don't have the training? But you know, it's a wonderful opportunity certainly for your company to get the skill set that you want, and then those individuals out there that may not know what their true capabilities are, because they've never worked in this area and may not know, is this something I enjoy? Is this something I'm acclimated? Is this something I want to make a career in? So how does your company go out and maybe recruit these individuals out in the community to become, you know, apprentice in your company, and then maybe go on to take, you know, senior positions and experienced positions once they've been trained? How's that, how do you do that? And how do people out there know that they have this opportunity, even though they might not be starting with any of these skill sets at all?
Thank you, Senator, for your question. So right now, we have obviously had to diversify our recruitment efforts. For us at Guam Shipyard, two of our major recruitment resources is Guam Community College with the bootcamps that they've been successfully implementing. We just actually hired about 10 from the recent 13 that completed the bootcamp program, and we've seen great success with those individuals who have gone through that program, and we also work with the GCA Trades Academy. They are more geared towards the construction industry, but we actually just went through a revision of our standards to add Trades Academy, because through their NCCER program, they collaborated with the National Maritime Education Coalition, and so they actually have a maritime-specific program, specific courses. So we've added them as a related technical instruction training provider. Other ways, we've been reaching out, even at the middle school level, there has been career development days or career days, so we have been attending those, trying to create, you know, more opportunity for these young minds to, you know, know that there's other career opportunities and paths other than, you know, the typical go-to-college and things like that. So, you know, we are becoming very more active, even at a younger stage. We work very closely also with DOL, trying to reach out to those students who are getting ready to graduate and seeing how maybe we can start implementing a program within the high school curriculum, so that by the time they are graduating and 18 years of age, we can hire them right away. Because the unique challenge, especially for ship repair, is 95% of our work is on base, and so, you know, we have to meet those requirements and to get individuals on base as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I just wanted one last question, Mr. Chair, for Department of Labor. How do you help facilitate from Department of Labor if I'm an unemployed person coming to Department of Labor? Are you providing me information or opportunities on perhaps maybe a career I'm not even aware that I might be able to participate or go get training in? I mean, is there outreach also from Department of Labor for those individuals out there that may not have any training, formal training in these areas? You know, that they have an opportunity to connect with these type of businesses that can provide that training for them, an employment opportunity, while they're being trained with the option to, you know, move up once they, once they complete their apprentice program?
Most definitely, Senator. Thank you for that question. It all starts with the American Job Center over at the Department of Labor. So any person can walk in there, and our case manager, our caseworkers, who are wonderful, they take them in and try to find their interests, whether it be starting with the GED, because a lot of people won't hire, we just get them through that, and then after that, take the next steps. And if their goal is really to get through an apprenticeship program, which we have the state apprenticeship offices right there, we get them through. Perfect example is this ongoing youth program that we have. What would happen is one gentleman came in, and I said, how are you doing? What would happen is one gentleman came in and I said, how are you doing? He said, I liked where they placed me, but I really don't want to be there, sir. And he was placed because he was, thought he was really interested and he was a high school senior at the time and I just said, well, where do you want to go? And he said, I just want to work with my hands. So we called a company that also like Guam Shipyard are very good, work well with the American Job Center and we told him about this young man and he said, send him over. So right now currently, that young man is part of an apprenticeship program, which is a, and he will find a specific field, whether it be welding because he said he just, or any type of skill. So there's many ways, whenever there is either homeless coalitions, we send out, the American Job Center's team is, is out there and ready. We also had recently, a couple of years ago, the director led that job fair that we had over, I'm not sure how many thousands of people came at Riga Hotel. We're all ready to serve and just as long as you're ready to, to start a new leaf, we're here for you.
Oh, I appreciate that information and I ask you just so we can provide it for the public because I, I mean, a lot of people are apprehensive maybe because if they don't have any background or maybe they don't have a lot of experience, they might even be hesitant to knock on the door thinking, oh, I, you know, I don't have the skill set and, and I think just letting them know that there's a possibility of getting training, being employed and having the opportunity to move up in a career that maybe you never thought about before would really open a lot of doors because when I see so many, and we have a growing number of very young capable individuals in our community that have no career direction, are not working, we'd like to see them being productive and working and taking care of themselves and their families and contributing to the community. So certainly any opportunity to do that, I think we'd all like to see that.
Thank you. Also, just a quick word, Chairman, and concerning the Honorable Senator Tyde Guie's question, we really have already a budget analyst and her name is Navis Sablon and she, you know, she takes care of everything. She is really sharp on the GRAP program, she takes care of every individual's hour, she communicates with all the employers. I know that, I speak to her and I don't know why that didn't come out, but she takes care of all, keeping track and she goes back and she says, you cannot charge this or this is a dupe, or she's really on top of that part of the program. But having that one and we still do need another one and we're very close to getting that, that second analyst. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that.
Senator, I just wanted to add to your concern about recruiting people into apprenticeship programs because for some companies, they've hired individuals into entry-level positions. And I'm working with one company right now that hired a young man to help in the kitchen of a restaurant and they're seeing potential in this young man and trying to get him into an apprenticeship program so that he would get courses, the culinary courses at GCC and eventually become a cook in that restaurant. And for any company, if any of their employees really can fill positions above and beyond what they're currently doing, the upskilling of those employees can be a very critical part of apprenticeships. And when I mentioned earlier worrying about resignations and retirements and relocations, that's one of the ways those positions can be filled, is to, is to go into the companies themselves, have them recognize that, you know, they know that the manager of a store is going to be retiring in two years, then get somebody within the store to go through an apprenticeship program so that he or she can assume that responsibility in a couple of years. And while, you know, there are a lot of people who talk about the difference between going to college or not going to college, the apprenticeship program is a nationally certified program is actually a good combination of going and getting instruction, but at the same time really learning your skills from on-the-job training.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I like the word upskilling, upskilling. Maybe we need to do that on our side of the aisle, upskilling. That's a good word. I appreciate, thank you for your elaboration on this and I just think there's an opportunity out there for, like I said, sometimes when people don't have the ability or the skill set or the experience, there's hesitancy there and it's kind of letting them know that, hey, you know, you can walk through the door and even if you don't have the experience, we can train you, we can provide you some open doors to a new career option that maybe they, they didn't think about. And at the same time, businesses that need employees with a skill set, you know, it's a wonderful combination if it all works together, it's good synergy there. So thank you, I appreciate your response to my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Just a few comments from me before I ask the author of the bill to close. You know, I don't have any problems with Department of Labor. When you get your money, just do what you need to do. You know what? I'm not going to tell you where you need to spend it, not when there's a question of where you're spending it comes up, then be ready to answer it. When you get your thirty percent, do what you need to do to help, help the other business out there, because that's what you, and you guys have been doing great jobs. I mean, you already got during the COVID, you did what you need to do, now you have another program now from the, from the typhoon? May God bless you and your people and thank you for what you do. And with that, Senator Manish Shelton, if you want to close and then we can wrap up this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I echo those sentiments too. Thank you very much to the Department of Labor for your hard work, for everything that you've done from the time of COVID to responding now to Typhoon Mawar with the disaster unemployment to Smasian, for your collaboration and your partnership with our local community, the different, the different companies across the island who are willing to partner and make better opportunities for our people. Thank you very much. We look forward to this bill moving expeditiously, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes. With that, there being no one else to present testimony on this bill, this hearing is now concluded. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this hearing and providing feedback and suggestion. Bill number one twenty-three-seven-COR public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is three fifty-three. Please be safe and have a nice day, a remaining day. Take care. Bye-bye.